City Hall, Council Chambers.
I gotta tell you folks, the American people are tired of it. Okay, we're tired of hearing the excuse of officer's safety. Okay, we don't see any firemen standing outside of a burning building talking about I'm not going in there for fireman's safety.
I don't know if you guys want to hear a Yankee come down here and roost your board because you guys ain't getting stuff done. But here we are from Western New York to down here to demand some change down here and ask for some accountability on behalf of the Erie County family.
But you are not doing enough. Every cop that was there that did not go in, no amount of training is gonna cause them to go in. They were already trained. I was a cop right after.
Listen y'all, these kids wanna act up in school, wanna go to school and embarrass you, wanna make like they ain't got no home training. So I told my son, don't go to school basketball no more. I'll take care of you, son. I'll do anything you want. I discipline him, but you're gonna embarrass me like this. Look, so now I'm gonna cut his hair.
Now I saw you were in a restricted area. Now I want your ID on the case.
You're not getting it.
Don't embarrass me. I told him, don't embarrass me. No.
It is August 9th, guys. We're down here in Uvalde City Hall. They're down here for the meeting with the chambers here and we're going to address the Uvalde representatives on behalf of the Erie County fam down here. So here we go. Sitting here in the meeting for the board here and actually have a young man next to me who was in the school that day. And we need officers who are mad because these children don't need to go through that kind of. Got yourselves a Blue Line gang member with his flag over his face. Flag of tyranny. I don't know why he has it. He'll be yellow line. That is Uvalde Police Department. Pretty, pretty.
Twenty-two, City Hall, Council Chambers. So I apologize that we're not here in our civic center, but we had the civic center booked with Avanti and we couldn't get set up in time then. So I apologize for the higher orders and that, but this is the best we can do in this place, so. I'm for city to get with it. Major League awesome.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I wanted to speak to you guys about today is speak to everybody about today's responsibility. And that responsibility is what has happened with these officers that we've seen in the videos in the hallway? Because as far as I'm concerned, it should have been a no brainer. These police folks should have been fired. A couple of them should definitely be criminally charged for negligence and we're seeing none of that. Instead, what we're seeing is officer's safety. And I gotta tell you folks, the American people are tired of it. Okay, we're tired of hearing the excuse of officer's safety. Okay, we don't see any firemen standing outside of a burning building talking about I'm not going in there for fireman's safety. Okay, so we need to do something and we need to do it right. The American people are watching. This right here, this negligence to do something about what could have been avoided. I mean, I just saw on Facebook a couple months, these guys had brand new equipment, brand new gear. It is your job, okay, as officers to put yourself in between the bullet and the citizen. That is the job, okay? That's what you signed up for. You didn't sign up for free doughnuts at Burger King. You didn't sign up for special rent when you live somewhere because you parked your officer car there. You know what I mean? You didn't sign up so that you and your Blue Line buddy could break the law and you guys could look the other way, okay? We signed up, they signed up to protect the citizens, okay? Enforce the law, sure, that's a, that's a good thing, but protect the citizens is A number one, okay? And that's what they need to do. And when they don't do that, okay, we don't want to hear excuses. We don't want to hear officer's safety. We don't want to hear any of this crap, all right? We want to see results. We want to see responsibility taken for the actions that happened on this day, okay? There's no more time to wait. Has any one of these guys been fired? Any of them? One officer. There were three hundred and seventy-some odd officers there. Was one of them fired at all yet?
We have one from City in Uvalde on suspension.
On suspension?
Yes, sir.
Is that suspension with pay?
That, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, suspension with pay. Great, great. So I can just be negligent at my job and then take a vacation, huh? Is that what we're telling the American public that that's what's happened here in Uvalde?
Oh, sir, we've started an internal investigation and we've got an outside agency doing internal investigation.
How long is this? Right, how long is this gonna take? Because for my investigation, it took me about five minutes of watching that video of firewalls and the criminally charged a cop.
Sixty to ninety days or more, we don't know. He's already started the investigation.
Sixty to ninety days. In sixty to ninety days, we're gonna get some responsibility.
There's still other investigations going on.
Are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna get responsibility in sixty to ninety days? Or are we gonna get everybody obeyed the policies and procedures and nothing's gonna be done? What are we gonna get?
We're gonna, when this investigation is done, whatever actions he tells us to do, there's nobody involved in this investigation with the city. It's completely outside people. They have free reign to do what they want to do.
Right, but the investigation, but the investigator's not charged of firing.
He's not charged, but he'll give us, he'll tell us what, what procedures we need to follow, what, who needs to go, what needs to happen.
Okay, well hopefully the investigator's not a family member of any of those.
Not.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna read the address to the next person, but good citizens.
Hello, how's it going everybody? Hope everything's doing well today. I'm here because of what happened. I've lived in Texas my entire life. I've never seen anything like what happened here anywhere in the country. I really don't, I don't think I've seen any of it anywhere. It's absolutely disgusting that we have officers that are still on the force. I've almost gotten in a fight with one of your officers, a lieutenant, just not even thirty, forty years ago. Almost got in a physical altercation with lieutenant because he was violating, I mean, couple, like law, he was violating the law. Operating a motor vehicle without a seatbelt on. How do we expect these cops in this town to respect us if they don't even respect the laws as they're supposed to uphold? I didn't honestly know what I was gonna come up here and say. I've, you know, I've had a lot on my mind about this, but this is absolutely ridiculous. It's not that hard. You look at the video, you watch the evidence and you make a decision, okay? I understand there's investigations going on. How long are the investigations gonna take? These investigations can go on for years, okay? And then what, what do you think's gonna happen? Do we have to show up here every time with a city council meeting and wait for something to happen? Or are we just gonna have city council members that actually have the stones to stand up and say, you know what? Our police department, they, they effed up. They did the wrong things. They didn't do what they're supposed to do and they thought about themselves before innocent children. I have kids at home. I have four kids. I love my kids to death. And if any one of those officers were to put hands on me to go into that school, they would have had to kill me. I don't care. Any officer is gonna have to either kill me or get dead. That's not gonna, that's not gonna fly with me, okay? But I see any of your officers making mistakes, I will publicize it and it will absolutely be for everybody to see. And I will make sure that it gets out across the world, okay? I've got people watching right now from Switzerland, Norway, Denmark, the UK. Everybody's watching these guys. We just need to actually stand up and do something about it, okay? I get you have to wait for a protocol and you gotta do all this stuff. It's not that hard. There are people who want to work and there are a lot of good law enforcement officers out there. There are a lot of bad law enforcement officers out there too. And I would say a majority of your law enforcement in this city, I don't know about the county, but about the city, needs to be changed now. Okay, I'm not, I'm not from here. I have property near here and I have property near the county. You know, and this is really sad. Like, I love coming down here and it's sad that parents can't even go in and get their kids. It's sad that we have to sit here, you know, be talked down to like that gentleman was a little bit. You know, it's really not that hard, guys. Come on, do better.
Do better.
Dan Erie County.
Your name is not Dan Erie County.
I've come all the way from Western New York to come down here and address this council today. And part of my job and what I do for a living is to maybe help bridge that gap between law enforcement and the citizens. Cause there's a huge gap there. And in my entire history, in my entire career of working on this behalf, I've never in my entire life seen somebody with negligence that puts more police officers in danger across this entire country and world than your guys' police department down here. So what I want is accountability for these officers who put all the other officers in danger. Cause if you guys want to talk about officer's safety, we ought to start talking about heroism. Cause officer's safety is nothing more than cowardism, all right? I don't know if you guys want to hear a Yankee come down here and roost your board because you guys ain't getting stuff done. But here we are from Western New York to down here to demand some change down here and ask for some accountability on behalf of the Erie County family. Because you guys are putting my officers in danger in my county, in my state. You guys are held no accountability. You guys want to put them on vacation? That's what you guys want to do? You guys want to put these guys on vacation, give them pay to put all the day officers in this whole country in danger? Because you guys don't have the galls, the stones for accountability. That's what we want down here today. We want accountability. We want answers. We don't want, oh, we're gonna investigate ourselves, find no wrongdoing and we're gonna go about our day.
That's right.
Because there's no bigger cowardism than this, this city down here don't go in there and they want to use children as human shields? What is wrong with you guys? How do you guys call yourselves men down here? All yous down there, out there, I got a Uvalde Police Department member over here with a Blue Line flag, defecration of the American flag on his face. Why is his stripe not yellow for Yellow Line gang members down here in Uvalde? That's what we want to know. And how is that appropriate to desecrate a flag on his face right now? Blue Line gang stuff? This is the Yellow Line, this is home of the Yellow Line gang members, guys. And you guys gotta change that. It's up to you guys to change that. None, the police ain't gonna change it if you guys don't hold nobody accountable for this. This whole country is put in danger by this council right here because they're not, nothing's being done. We, if I, I do, also I'm a mechanic in my trade. If I leave a tire loose on a car, nobody's gonna give me paid vacation when that guy loses his life because the tire came off. Your police department's tire came off the other day and we want, we want, we want answers and we want accountability. On behalf of the Erie County fam, I drove and flew many miles to come down here and talk to you guys today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So unless you guys want a Yankee to come down here and teach you guys how to be men, you guys better get your board on gear and you guys better get your, your act together down here. We don't want to have to come down here and address officer's safety. Again.
That's right.
Nowhere in this country does anybody, any police department in this history of this country ever put police in more danger than you guys are. And then, and then we pass that to citizens, children. There's children in this room who've seen things they might, they should have never seen. Them, them officers should have been in there getting shot at, not waiting outside arresting parents? You guys are a disgrace. And you guys better hold some accountability, these, the, the management, the, whoever's won in the show, you guys better do something about it. I come down here with my cockroach crushes today to make sure you guys hear the, the message loud and clear. Nobody in this country wants to hate police officers, all right? We all want to love them. We all want to appreciate them. We all want to calm them when we want to, when we got a problem. What are you guys doing to that image? You guys think about that? Now let's think about that when you, when it comes down to some accountability for these officers. Cause that's what the, that's what the people are here. The whole thing signs that say accountability, all right? That's what we want. And I, and I yield back. This Yankee will sit down and listen to the rest.
Some of my questions were already answered. I just had a couple of questions. Hello, is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a couple of questions that some of them were answered already, but one of the things that I wanted to ask is how we're gonna change the perception that we see our police officers? Because I was happy to tell my son that they were gonna have a lot of state troopers there and they had fences. You know, maybe he'd feel a little bit better, but he told me, who cares if there's cops? They're not gonna do anything anyway. And I, I just didn't know how to answer that. And I feel like it's the police department or the cops to help change that perception. How, how are we gonna do that? Cause I want him to go back to school, but I'm not gonna send him back until he feels comfortable, until she feels comfortable. So I can't do that. I could tell them that they're gonna do a good job, but how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna change? Are we gonna raise standards? Some of the police officers, they ran twenty yards and then they were breathing hard and, you know, they were, the way they acted. What can we do to raise the standards to make them feel more comfortable? Cause it's not about us. It's about the children. And I haven't heard anything about what we're gonna do to help them feel better.
Well, one of, one of the things that I'd like to tell you is we're bringing in T, Teeks and their top of the line instructors to meet with our bill and start retraining and additional training for our officers. You know, we realize we have to earn this community's trust again and we're gonna do everything that we can to do it. I'm sure that what, all these other people will, there will be accountability, but we do have a process that we have to follow. But I, I can promise you, there will be accountability and we are gonna try to earn, not try, we will earn this community's trust again.
Is it possible for you to do some type of like physical weight?
Something in the seat?
A lot of them seem like, I'm overweight, but some of them seem like they're a little bit overweight. And image is everything in my opinion, right? I mean, if you look, sometimes you see the board controls, they look more professional, you get more respect. And when you're not in a tip-top shape, it doesn't represent, nothing against anybody, right? But it doesn't represent a good police officer in my opinion. So I don't know if they could somehow raise the standards on, on, you know, the weight limits or the physical tests that they have to. I know in, in the academy, they do some tests, but I don't know if they keep up with that or not. And I feel like that would maybe make them feel a little bit safer as well. That's just my opinion.
How about we look at maybe trying to set up a little commission, some family members, some community members and council members? If we can discuss that. Would you be willing to participate in that?
I'd be happy to, yes.
Why don't you have that already?
A public apology to the kids.
So I did, I did have another thing. The current fountain that, that we have over there, I was, I've been talking with some of the family members, some of the teachers and other community members. And we will pitch in to, if y'all would consider doing like a koi fish pond there where we have the current fountain. We, as a community, will pitch in and pay for all the koi and all the equipment. Cause I think that it brings peace. Some of the parents, especially some of the ones that had injured children, when they go over there, they get anxiety or they get these flashbacks. And maybe doing something like feeding the fish might help them feel at ease. So I wanted to throw that idea out there and if y'all would consider it, maybe I can look a little more into it. Like I said, we'll take care of the cost and maybe talk to the botanical gardens to donate some fish. But I wanted to throw that out there and see if y'all would actually consider it.
We are in the process. It's already started. I talked to a good thing. We're completely redoing that fountain. What you see today, maybe tomorrow is not gonna be the same, hopefully in a week. So it's gonna, it's gonna look much, much better and we'll consider maybe some fish. We gotta get the fountain in shape again.
All the ponds are still built. The entire fountain's getting rebuilt.
So would it be possible to maybe put some fish in there? It's coming from not only me, but family members. I try to work directly with some of them and I think that would be nice, but I'm glad to hear that it's being. But please take consideration some of the, I don't know who, it was a great decision to clean it up. It looked better. They're emptying it out. But if you consider that, a lot of the kids love feeding the fish. It's very peaceful and people would come and look at it. I think it'd give the plaza a little bit better look. So if you consider that, I'd really appreciate that.
That memorial needs to be made out of marble and every one of those children's names need to be etched in it for everyone to know.
Jack Miller.
Oh, Jack Miller, San Antonio, Texas. This is my card. You're gonna want it and you want to give it to all your police officers because I'm gonna make it my hobby. I'm a civil rights activist. I, I catch bad cops. I appreciate you guys. Citizens are telling me you give them extra time here and I'm glad that you're letting them vent. Very important. And I'm glad you're talking about fish ponds and you're talking about getting people involved. That's great and I commend you for that, but you are not doing enough. Every cop that was there that did not go in, no amount of training is gonna cause them to go in. They were already trained. I was a cop right after Columbine. And they came out with active shooter training. And as soon as I heard that day before video came out, I started telling everybody they weren't following their training. And I'm here to tell you, if a mass shooting happens again in your city, these same police are not going to run in. You don't have to take my word for it. Look at what they did. They were trained to run in and stop the shooter. And they didn't. I'm not anti-cop. I'm just telling you, that's the facts, right? They didn't do it and they should have. We all know now they should have. They didn't. So what do you do? You disband. You get rid of every single cop that was there that did not run in there when that guy was shooting. You get rid of them. Is it gonna cost you money? Absolutely. And I don't think there's one citizen in here that will not sign that check. Let them sue. Let them sue. Bye, get rid of them. Bye. This is an at-will state. They're not civil service protected. And if they are, see ya, sue away. We don't want them here faced with the same decision ever again. They've already showed you what they'll do, even with the proper training. So please, bringing in somebody to train the current officers, no. They need to be gone. You bring in new officers, the state will kick in. You apply for emergency assistance, they'll kick, they'll handle your law enforcement. Then you start hiring guys here and girls here, right? They'll do that and you train them. So that's what I had to say about that. They've already demonstrated to you what they will do. Lieutenant Javier Martinez today got out of his car, got in our faces and wanted to fight us because we told him to put on his seatbelt.
Professional.
Come to find out, he was the first officer in that school.
Professionals.
He wanted to fight us, but he would not run in. We have it on video.
I'll show y'all if you'd like to.
You need to get rid of him.
Those are your professionals.
Your police officers show up, get out and they have to push him back in his car. And they left because we weren't doing nothing wrong at all. And your police knew that. He needs to go. Please. Last thing, last thing. If you guys don't get rid of your police department, nothing against you. I commend you for everything you're doing for these residents and children. But I'm gonna teach your residents how to recall you. You all know what recall is. And take my word serious. Call Leon Valley. You gotta smirk. I already know who you are and I know why you gotta smirk and that's okay. Call Leon Valley and ask them what happened the last time I told the city that I was gonna have you recalled. We had two council people recalled, police chief fired, city administrator fired.
This guy's trash, guys.
Sir, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Yes, sir.
You want to start a recall, let me start the damn thing.
That sounds good. I expect nothing less from you.
I'm signing the petition, but the one thing I'm tired of is people like you come from outside.
I don't care what you're tired of. We tired of people like you.
There's twenty kids who can't get tired no more.
Tell them. We're tired of people like you.
There's twenty kids who'll never get tired again.
There is kids in here, there is kids from Uvalde here that are traumatized, that don't need to hear the other, I'm sorry.
Please be respectful, mayor.
Oh, well, he is being respectful.
Don't say you're tired of people like us. That's disrespectful.
Yeah, but you're not thinking about the kids that are in here. I lost my niece. I lost my niece and she was one of the victims and my kid is here.
I understand that, that's why I'm here.
Who, okay, but don't be disrespectful with him because he's the, he's the one, he's not a coward. He's the one person out of everybody who wears the governor, wears everybody. He's the only person, he's the only person who listens to us.
Why is he yelling at people that want to change?
I know y'all don't know that because y'all are not from here, but he's the only person.
We investigated everything in this whole situation.
We have to live it. We have to live it. We're here every day. We wake up here, we go to sleep here. We have to send our kids back to school.
I wake up crying about this.
We know this, but don't disrespect him.
I've been, I've been asked by a parent to, let's just keep it down for his child.
Think about the kids that are in here.
Let's just do that for a second. Can we, for a second, please? I, I know that emotions are high. Guys, this is how you get these emotions down. Get rid of it, please. That every single officer that was there, not every one of them, but everyone that was there that made the choice to not enter while the shooting was going on, even though they promised in their training, in their active shooter training, they started way back in Columbine, that they would. They promised everybody that they would. They just need to be gone. They should have quit.
It's our community. We can have whoever we want in here.
You guys have the power to say bye-bye. I'm begging you, please do that and have, ask DPS to come in and help you guys out while you get new officers in. Please, thank you.
I would encourage everybody here in the press, if you're listening, Google, hold on a second. All you have to do is Google Texas Peace Officer Termination. You will exactly, you will find the very first thing that pops up that tells you how you can terminate a peace officer. We're following that to the T. You can't go against it because it's a state law.
Can you tell me what happens if you terminate against that state law? What happens?
I don't know. I'm not gonna break a state law.
I will tell.
If we break the state law, what does that, how does that make that right?
Okay, I'm gonna answer. This is what happens if you guys.
I'm being honest and I'm being true.
I know of the law you're talking about and you are telling the truth. Let me tell you what the penalty is for breaking that law. There is no criminal penalty for doing it. It brings you up on civil liability. That's it. And like I said, I don't think there's one person in here that won't sign that check.
But it sets a, it sets a precedence and it set a precedence in a group like this on something like that, when you're going against a law.
Rosa Parks, let me tell you.
I think a precedence is what we need here.
Please, please, please. Rosa Parks saw a law that carried a criminal penalty and she said, screw that, I'm gonna break that law.
That's a little different than that.
It is not. It's a law. You're using the law to not fire a cop?
No, not exactly. We're following, we're following the law and what the state stands for.
Right, so this is a law you don't need to follow. You need to fire the cops. That did, that made the decision not to go in there.
It's a precedence you know.
The penalty.
Erie County fam, Ernest says, that is not a precedence they want to set. But let me know in the comments section, cause I'd really like to hear your guys' opinion. Personally, I think that's the exact precedence that needs to be set. Any police officer that does not rush into that school to save those children from a shooter should be terminated immediately. Whether it's illegal or not to terminate them immediately. That precedence would restore the assurance to the children and might help their trust to go back to school to know if a cop doesn't come, they're getting fired. Tell me what you guys think in the comments section.
You're in a war, I'm a veteran. If you're in a war zone and you don't fight, the penalty is death. It still is. If you run away, I can shoot and kill you. All I'm asking you to do is fire them. And let me tell you, the law says I can kill them, but my God says I can't. But if you're on a battlefield with me and you run, I'm gonna shoot you as soon as I can. Even though my God says I can't kill, that's what you're gonna get. I'm gonna violate that law and I'm gonna seek forgiveness. You fire the cops in violation of that law and you seek forgiveness from them. You seek forgiveness from these folks, please. Thank you. And as far as the recall goes, look, if you're not getting rid of these cops, that's a promise. You gotta get rid of them. Later on, you can let me know by email or whatever if you're for getting rid of the cops or not. If you're for getting rid of the cops, I'll leave you alone. But if you're not, like you, no. Okay, then, then you let me know. Later on, you let me know your position. But anybody up here that isn't in a position that you're not gonna push getting rid of the cops, I'm gonna do everything in my power. I'm gonna educate the citizens on how to conduct a recall. And that's about the only thing I can do that's legal, right? Okay, thank you. And I'm approachable. You can call it down, continue to talk.
Is more rides, sir?
I'm giving up my spot.
You can hand it to one of these guys. Hang on, hang on. Michelle Proudie?
This is a great setup you have. Okay, on May 24th, 2022, there were nineteen children and two teachers who were brutally massacred at Robb Elementary. Their lives were snuffed out. And yes, there were several injured. As the evidence slowly and painfully emerges, we are now confident that many of those lives had a chance at survival had only action been immediate and first aid rendered. Our tax dollars fund this city and many departments, including the city police department. In return, we expect a well-organized, professional, competent, and respectable force. What we have instead, what we are traumatized again and again by is an inept, unstructured national embarrassment of a circus tent full of smug clowns. These clowns continue to cruise our streets sporting their tarnished badges and walk around with their heads held high as if they did no wrong. If any of these individuals who are on scene that day had any shred of decency, they would at a minimum look these families in the eyes and say that they made a horrible mistake. But I don't believe any of them have. Have they? But at best, they should turn in their badges and move on. So yeah, we keep going in circles on this topic. This is because it's approaching three months, and we are still being placated with tidbits or being outright stonewalled or being given excuses. And the truth is, if no one was speaking out at any of the podiums, no action of any kind would be sought. I don't know this police department's policy is regarding officer-involved shooting. But all of us know that a well-structured department would put their officers on some kind of leave pending investigation as well as require a mandatory mental health evaluation. But nothing common sense has occurred by action of the department or by this governing body. We know you are tired of hearing our pleas and our tirades. We know there are many community members that are not supportive of our efforts. Some feel we have no business fighting for what's right. Others complain that we are doing it wrong. And I say to them, by all means, if you are holding on to the playbook for how to get through this, then please share. Regardless, your negative comments are noted, but if you don't have the courage to speak your mind in person to any of these grieving families, looking them in the eyes, then your comments have zero value. As Berlinda has said, we are not done. And I will add that we will not be silent, we will not back down, and we sure as hell won't be intimidated. The dead, the wounded, the traumatized, and all their families deserve better than three months of lackluster performances by all parties in question, including some sitting before me. To emphasize our determination, we are submitting formal complaints against specific officers who are at minimum partners in gross negligence. We expect immediate feedback and full cooperation from this governing body who is employed by the people. We are prepared to take this to the next level.
Yes.
Jesse, Jesse Riso. Honestly, I don't know how I feel about outsiders coming into Uvalde County and bringing these emotions like that. I understand you have feelings and you have the freedom to speak, and you got every right. But we had this happen the last time around. Some guy comes in, brings all the cameras. It's all good for like a little fifteen minutes of fame, and maybe you made a change where you're from, but there's a way to handle things. You know, you got two little kids, apologized to them, they had a walkout. You had a young lady here having an argument with somebody. Sometimes I wonder if I should even address you and just ignore you. I don't know how I feel about that, but I just, I think that's unacceptable. I understand that we need to hold people accountable. We've been trying our best to try to hold everybody accountable, but I also understand that there's a process. I understand that it may take some time. You look at history, you look at history and you wonder George Floyd, you wonder a lot of different things, and eventually the time comes where you look at the evidence and you say, I need to hold these guys accountable. Now, if you don't charge them, that changes the spectrum of ballgame. Totally changes it. But in the meantime, while you're gathering the data, that information, you have to sit back and be patient with it. And in order to understand that, you have to ask clarifying questions. I mean, let the people, whoever's here that totally understands how the grievance works when you charge somebody, the grievance, how much time they have. Until you fully understand that, and once you've exhausted all those resources and nothing happened and someone got in court, then you come and fight, then the gloves are off. But in the meantime, and if any, you know, when I get done here in a minute, when you guys have a chance, if somebody's very familiar with the process, not, I think, or a possibility, whatever, but if somebody really understands the process, feel free to educate us on it, because maybe that's what we need. Yesterday, in addition to that, if you can kinda, in a little bit, tell us, if you can, where Mr. Fardes stands as far as like you suspended him, where he stands in the investigation, how much more time do you anticipate? Yesterday, we asked Dr. Harold, we brought up the active shooter protocol. He couldn't answer. He couldn't tell us how many times they did the drills from 2020 when they adopted the program. We asked him from March, they did the training, his own staff conducted the training, not just for the school, but for multiple people. He couldn't tell us how many times Mr. Rodriguez or anybody did the thing. I don't know if he just drew a blank or but it's failed leadership. And I'd like to hear from you all. I mean, I'm assuming that, that being you're part of the police, you don't just hand it over just to the UC ISD. You know, if you run these drills along with them, and how often you run the drills with them? Every month, every so often? And then where do you document it, that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing? You did have a good point. I mean, you can do all the training in the world, but if you don't have the heart, you don't have the courage, then you're not gonna go in. It's obvious. A good friend of mine, from Batesville, Higginley, Sunday, veteran wreck, lost a finger, almost lost a leg, lost people in a war roadside bomb. He's mad, and he says, I think the problem that you had is you didn't run the drill over and over and over where it becomes instinct. And it's a tough lesson. Lost a lot of children, lost teachers. It's horrible. But you, we're at this point now, you gotta hold them accountable. But the people that you're gonna hire, the people that are gonna come in, gotta check themselves. Do you have it in you? And if you don't have it in you, just check yourself out. You mentioned that you're conducting an investigation that could take about sixty to ninety minutes. Excuse me, that'd be nice. Sixty, sixty to ninety days. Dr. Harold, when we asked him if he had considered an investigation like that, I know you can't answer for him, but if you could explain, I know there's a lot of questions, but if you could explain the pros and cons and something like that. Can't see a con with it, but if you can kinda tell us that, and the cost, and how did you determine to go with, I think you said it was Jesse Bravo or something like that, that's, how do you determine that you're gonna go with Jesse? And are there a lot of companies that do this type of investigation?
Sure, I mean, two things I can tell you. One, I mean, we called around to abandon, and done an investigation here in Uvalde before. We asked him to give us a name. We also talked to some people in San Antonio, and we got about probably, I wasn't involved in the prosecution process, but I wanna say there were seven to eight names that were given to us. This guy came highly recommended from different law enforcement agencies, and so that's the one we chose. Also, one of his skills was, it will be his people and him doing the investigation themselves. Like I said, nobody from the city would be involved in that investigation. Now, we won't be briefed on anything. We'll go back to the city attorney and the city manager, and then they will come to us with what we need to do and what we need to change. He started his investigation. One of the things we're moving into now is to look at our policies. To answer your question on active training, I don't know, but I don't know that it happened to you two times that we've done it in the last four years, in all honesty. There may be more that I'm not privy to, but I don't know, but two. And each time, we weren't in charge of it. I think we ran that school. So I'm just laying the cards on the table. I don't know what the procedures are. I know we have a policy there. I don't know, like I said, I don't know what was done at that point. But the last one was done and written by Peter Aragón of the school district. And in that particular deal, he named himself as the incident commander on that active shooting deal. And so I'm not making excuses for anybody. There were numerous, I've said from day one, every agency that was in that hallway has to be accountable. And right now, as it is, the only person who's really started an investigation is us. DPS is doing an internal one. Border Patrol is in the process of picking somebody to do something. Sheriff Department hasn't done one yet that I know of. Nor, everybody there has to be accountable. But so, I mean, we will get these answers, and we will take action on what we find.
And the cost?
I couldn't tell you the cost. I mean, I don't, I don't.
Not that, I mean, it doesn't really matter.
I would tell you it's probably gonna be in quite high, you know, in the thousands of dollars.
Have you, have you, I'm assuming that you and Judge and Dr. Harold, y'all speak, have you recommended something like that to Dr. Harold?
I've called for everybody to call for an investigation at one point on that day, every agency. I haven't talked to Hal directly about it, but I mean, he knows about being in a podium, we were doing, we were starting one on our own.
I'm assuming something like that would be important, so that obviously the more evidence, the more you have, the solid, the more solid your case is gonna be, whatever action you decide to take against every single individual? Thank you.
Ms. Karu?
Good evening, council and staff members, visitors, family members. Diana Lavelle Karu, citizen of Uvalde, Texas. We keep coming before you. We continue to ask the same questions. We continue to be angry about the lack of answers. And personally, as I listen to these gentlemen from out of town that aren't from here, don't have to live with our tragedy, it's personal. We, it's personal. It's not something that happened somewhere. It happened to us. And I always tell people, I can call out my family members, but you can't. This is our family. Uvalde is our community. Yes, we appreciate those of you that are coming from outside, bringing your ideas, shouting your anger, creating some chaos in our city to some extent. We need to shake it up. I know that. But these are our people, and we need to work with them to get this right. And so it angers me to hear, I mean, the gentleman last meeting, like, go away. Let us fight our own battle. This is our fight, and we are more than capable of fighting it. We don't need outsiders to come in and mess it up, because you're gonna go away, and we're still gonna be here.
This fight affects the whole country, though. Ten, two weeks before their shooting, two weeks before their shooting, Buffalo, New York had one too. Buffalo, New York had one too.
I believe in the kids. Your kids are your family. These chowards are not your family.
This could happen anywhere. This guy's talking about a precedence. We need to set the right one.
It's okay, I.
If you outburst again while she's speaking, you're gonna be removed from here. Whether you like it or not, you're gonna be removed. So if you speak out again when somebody's speaking, you're going out the door. We're gonna show you, we're gonna show the respect.
Believe me, I'm angry at my council. I'm angry at my councilmen. I'm angry at our police. I'm angry at our school district. I want it to change, but I want to be the one that works with this community to create that change. We do not need the madness that's coming from outside. And please, respect the fact that we are telling you we can fight our own fight. I've come to this council repeatedly to also ask for accountability, to also ask to do the things that you can do. I understand there's a criminal investigation underway. And at some point, I pray, and I know many others do, that there will be individuals that will be criminally charged for what happened on May 24th. But I know that's outside of your purview, outside of your authority, nothing that you can do in that particular venue. But you do have the ability as an employer to do some things with your employees based on performance, based on expectation of the job that they were hired to do. Last time I was here, I asked for possibly considering desk duty, get them off the streets, because it is insulting to us to see them out there daily like nothing happened, even though something significantly horrible happened. And so again, I'm asking the council if you would please, please, do what you can internally, looking at them as employees, following the rules of how you fire a law enforcement officer. And I'm not even saying you need to fire all of them, but you definitely need to hold them accountable to the level at which they participated on that day. And so we keep coming back to you. We will keep coming back to you. I support the individuals that have been working together, Michelle Proudie, Adam Martinez, Jesse Riso, Emma Trimble, Pastor Myers and his wife. We are dedicated to this fight, and we're gonna keep coming back, and we're gonna keep holding you accountable. And so we're not going away, and I know you know we're not going away. And we're just gonna continue this fight, and we can do it ourselves.
Love has no boundaries. Thank you for all of you who came showing your heart and your love. No, we need police officers with the right heart. You're right. They're never gonna run in. If it happened again, they would never run in because they don't have the right heart.
Ma'am, please speak in the part of Ismail who gave up his speaking position.
I'm gonna finish with the Uvalde people first.
No problem.
Pastor Myers?
I wanna thank you for just a couple of minutes, hopefully. The Bible says that we need to honor authority here at this earth. I've been living here in Uvalde for sixty-nine years. I am from Uvalde. And I'm angry at all of you. And it is very hard to honor you when we don't see any results taking place in almost three months. We have always honored the police in the streets, in the car, wherever, in the restaurants, in grocery stores. We always, my husband has always stepped up the plate and gone up to them and tell them, thank you for your service, for vengeance, he's always done that. Now, whenever I see a police officer, I don't know if he was the one, one of the ones in the hallway. So, I look away. I don't even want to look at him in the face. And I, I know that it takes play, it, it takes time to do what you have to do. But there, there comes a time when you have to take action. There comes a time you have to take action. I heard, I heard that the, the principal from Rob was reinstated as a principal again, is that correct, sir?
Yeah, I have no idea on this, Kofi, I, I was getting.
From Rob, from Rob.
She was reassigned as assistant director for special education.
She was reinstated?
She's doing a different job. I'm sorry, she's doing a different job, she's working at, I would assume, Special Education. Yeah, but she got her job back, if that's what you're asking.
So. Why, why would she get her job back when she didn't do a good job when she was there?
You have to ask her.
I'm sorry?
You have to ask the school director. We have nothing to do with that, they reinstated her.
Wow, I thought maybe somehow, some way, all of you worked together as the city, as the school, we all worked together.
Efficient government.
We all tried to work together, but we have no say in our state policies like that, right? Our policies is what it is, it's like we don't consult them on our policies.
So, I guess it would be fair to say that my grandchildren that wanted to come and live here with us from Phoenix, four grandchildren, um. They, they, I don't trust them with a board from the, from the school. You guys have nothing to do with that, they're right to do. Yeah, it's, and it, and it's too bad, and, and, you know, we need, we need to hold people accountable, sir, mayor. We need to hold people accountable, and at one time, I think I heard you, a few weeks ago, maybe about a month and a half ago, I think I heard you say, we were at the civic center, you said that it might take up to two years for an investigation, for the investigation?
That, that's not me, that's what the district attorney said. That's not me to say that, that's what she tells us it might take up to three years.
Wow, so meanwhile, sir, all these families, they're getting tired, sir. They're getting tired, they're getting frustrated, they're feeling hopeless. Like me, I, I don't want to live, you, you, leave Uvalde, I'm from Uvalde. I've been here sixty-nine years, I don't want to leave Uvalde. This is my home, and I want to die here. But I feel uncomfortable when I see a police officer, I feel uncomfortable, and I'm not gonna go out of my way to make his life miserable, because he can stop me and arrest me. Because he has a badge. But these people, sir, they need to, they need to be accountable. You, you, you guys need to do something as soon as possible, so that we can feel secure and safe here in our home in Uvalde. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. When I was in the workforce before I retired, I was a front end, front load operator for the solid waste department everywhere I was in Arizona. I had a supervisor that would tell us, I don't pay you to think, I pay you to know. I do not pay you to think, I pay you to know. These officers signed up to serve and to protect, and they did not do that. They did not do that, they did not protect, and they did not serve. But my question that brings me behind this podium, the chief of police, who does he answer to? City manager? The other day, I was going east, raining on the ninety, and a police officer get behind me from Grove all the way to Fourth Street, and he was tailgating me, I mean, he was right on me. I knew when he get right behind me, he was running my plates. I knew when he ran my plates, he was gonna know who I am, Daniel Myers. Now, I'm not here to make a name for myself, but I live here, this is my community, I live here. We pastor a church here. And this officer, and I didn't, I could get a number, a, a police car number, he followed me, I mean, he was right on me. I don't know if that was an act of intimidation or what it was, but somebody needs to talk to the city manager, tell the city chief of police to not intimidate these people. Don't do that, because we're irritated and frustrated as it is. I felt so close, Mr. Mayor, to slamming my brakes with my phone live and yelling at him, why are you tailgating me? But I didn't do that, because, as he was, he wanted me to mess up, he wanted to pull me over. And he had the authority to do that, because he's a police officer, but that's wrong. That's wrong what he did, that's wrong what he did. And I hope that he doesn't do any else, anybody else of our community like that. This, this happened to me, and it was, it was a nice, Mr. Mayor, it was a nice.
I'll tell you the same thing that I told the family members, I told them, you want my cell phone number, I'll give it to you. That happens, call me, I'll get, I'll get the city manager on the phone or whatever, we're not gonna stand for that, for harassment. I don't, I don't know what, we're not, we're not gonna do that. I've talked, I have talked with our city manager and our police chief about that, and I don't think any council member up here would go along with any kind of harassment by our police department, any citizens in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of then, it hasn't happened up to now, but it did happen that one time. But, Mr. Mayor, I mean, he was right on me, and that's not right, thank you.
I was born and raised here, good evening, I know Mr. Somora, I know most of y'all. Um, it's sad that our, our city's being divided. Not saying everybody, but some of y'all had to come up here screaming and yelling, it's not gonna get anything done. All they're gonna do is gonna sit there and look at you, unless you can talk civilly and get to your point, and say it in a way that they would understand how you feel. That's how we get it across, that's how we do it, that's how Uvalde is. We don't come over here yelling and screaming, and yes, we might get angry, and they'll stand there and they'll be like, okay, calm down, like I was just told right now. And I had to go to another room, and they put me in timeout. And that was Chief Rodriguez who had to do that, because somebody was telling the officers, take off your mask, they don't have to.
Take off your kids' blind masks, is what it said.
You told the other officer to take off his mask, and shh, I'm talking, you're not up here, I didn't address you. Anyway, like he told me to shut the F up, and I shouldn't have, but I told him back. Because guess what, he's not from here, he's not from Uvalde. We get these people that put on the news, hey, this was done that way, this was done that way. How do they know all of it's true? We still have another investigation that is going on. But yet, we're gonna have people come up here and yell it, scream at our council members, at our mayor, at our superintendent, at the board members, at our police officers? You know what, I was harassed last week by DPS. He played chicken with my, a vehicle I was in with three women, which for me was one of them, an eighty-nine-year-old woman, and two children. And then a sheriff deputy got behind them. I called nine-one-one, because we didn't know who the other car was. For five miles, they did that. Between eleven and twelve o'clock at night. Why aren't we arguing with DPS? I know DPS for a fact was one of the first ones there, because they're all the way down Highway eighty-three. Every corner, all the way going to La Pryor. They're at the first entrance, they're at the third entrance, they're over here by that new building for the, what is it, River or?
River Authority.
River Authority. They're always parked there, two or three. And I know for a fact they were there that day. Why aren't we arguing with them? They were the first ones there. I just saw in yours report, three minutes after, two minutes after the shooter got there, DPS was there. Why aren't we arguing with them? I'm, I'm a veteran, I never went anywhere. I stayed in San Antonio, at Fort, at Fort Sam. Would I have gone, yes. Would I have stand in the way, maybe? I don't know. I was not there, and I didn't know what, I wouldn't have known what I would have done. And the military, yes, you do sign the dotted line, and you get trained for that. The training begins at the police academy, that's where we need to start incorporating that. Incorporating what situations might be handled like this. Because we in Uvalde never thought this could happen here. We in Uvalde thought we were away from Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston. I mean, come on, Uvalde's a small, Penney was right there, so it's happened now. You know, we're a small community that have all these communities around us, and we treat each other nicely, respectfully. I mean, yes, they're gonna have the police accountability, but they have a process that they have to go through. Just like any job in the world that you go to, any job, you have to go through your chain of command in the military, am I right? You have to go through your chain of command, and this is our chain of command, right here. We're going through our chain of commands. It's not gonna be fast, it's not gonna be quick, but we still have another investigation that DPS is the one investigating it. Colonel McCraw was the first one out there pointing fingers. Here, instead of saying "we", because there were DPS, Border Patrol, sheriff, at the PD, and the school district PD. Why didn't he say "we"? Why did he just say Uvalde PD, hey, you know, he's the one at fault? Why didn't he say "we"? In the military, we don't do "we", one, we don't go "oh". Mr. Somora, you did it. No, we did it. Because there's no "I" in our military, there's all of us. Our community needs to come together, and we're not, and it's sad, because I grew up here. My dad taught thirty-two years in Room One at Rob Elementary. I remember I was able to walk at night with my dad to go home, he was my teacher. And we can't do that nowadays. And somebody had to tell me, those times are gone. Kids are being raised differently. There's a lot of getting on the phone, a lot of playing these games, like he was a gamer. Was directed the wrong way, was treated wrongly in school, been bullied. Us, we were bullied in school, it beat you up. It wasn't words, it wasn't on the phone, they'd kick your behind. How do I know that? Because I was almost one of those, but I had good friends, I had people behind me. Nowadays, they don't do that, now they verbally abuse you. They verbally abuse you to your face, they verbally abuse you on the internet, they show pictures, degrade you. And we're doing the same thing, like at the board meeting, degrading the ex superintendent. Well, that ex superintendent, I'm gonna tell you, white man in nineteen seventy-one hired a Mexican by phone call, and that Mexican was my father. I need a job, you're got it, deal with the paperwork later, John Harold. I highly respect that, because back then, things were like that always. And I want our town to come together, but these people that want to come and scream at y'all and yell at y'all, that's not right. If we want to get things done, we need to talk. He stopped, I stopped him at a board meeting, and I appreciated him. Because of all the abuse that people have done, because it is abuse, yelling at them, screaming at them, is not getting us anywhere. All these cameras are watching us, and all these people screaming and yelling and that aren't from here, you look like clowns and making us look bad, and you're tearing our town apart, and you're dividing our town. And it is true, because I've spoken to a lot of people, and I know people who wish that this would stop. Y'all, I mean, excuse me, some of y'all are sitting here, you're from Uvalde. Y'all are from Uvalde, you're not, she is, they are, they are, and we had some people that were not in Uvalde, we have a small community, we need to be in here too. That teacher?
Are you talking to me?
I've known him for the longest time, since nineteen ninety-three. I've known Irma, and they've known my son. I had ex-students who lost their babies. It affects everybody in this town. In this town right now, you say no, but you don't personally.
The whole country is affected by this tragedy, the whole country.
No, I'm speaking. The whole country feels it, but nobody feels it worse than the people that know each other. That's an ant right there next to you.
I came eighteen hundred miles to support this land, this children. Eighteen hundred miles.
And our friends gratefully stood up so they could sit down.
Hush, hush, you.
We stood up so y'all could sit down.
Yeah, well, some of y'all did, some of y'all did.
These outsiders, remember?
Yes. I'm not talking about you.
Okay, thank you.
But we need to come together, and we need to come and talk respectfully and rightfully to these gentlemen up here. Just like they said, they're not. You're, how much do you get paid?
Fifty bucks, twenty-five dollars.
You tell me, for twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars? And they want to do it for us, and take time out of their day, out of their family, and sit here and listen to us? We should give them that respect. And just because things aren't done like right now, doesn't mean that it's not gonna get done. It's gonna get done, but it does take time, just like everything else in this world. And God will provide us with what we need. And I want to apologize for that, because I feel bad that you were treated that way. My parents taught me never to say no to anybody, to be kind to everybody. My mother, back then, the Jehovah's Witnesses would knock on your door. She opened the curtain and said no. And this was always a joke, and they would laugh, but I cried that day, because you can't say no. That's how they taught me, that's what they showed me, and that's how this town is. You help each other, you be there for each other, no matter what. You see somebody broke down, you go and help them. If you can't help them, you find somebody. And one day, my dad did get that when he drove from San Antonio over here, and it was one of his ex-students. And my dad beamed, because he was given that opportunity to see one of his ex-students. Thirty-two years was given to Rob and Benson Elementary here in Uvalde because of Mr. John Harold. He was city mayor. He was city mayor at one time, and he, or was he manager?
Both.
And I got to work with him again, well, I got to work with him two times for the school district, and then when I worked for Mr. Rupus because he was the city attorney at the time. Hey, those that aren't from Uvalde, let's speak respectfully to these men. This is what we have. When you leave, this is what we have to deal with when y'all go home. You know, these police officers, yes, they will get what they are needed because of the path, of the process, and plus, they'll be moved to hire. So, and, and, you know, once they get hired, then, then the process will keep on going.
I have one question for you. The young man that was sitting next to me who is afraid to go to school because he thinks the cops ain't gonna do nothing, and we're asking these gentlemen to set a precedence by firing these guys, and you think that's bad?
No, I'm not thinking that's bad. No, you're not listening to.
How long do you wanna wait for the process before that kid feels comfortable going back to school? He should have never dealt with that.
You know, like I said, whenever they, you wanna, you want them to have accountability. Okay, fire the police officers, but are you gonna put, are you gonna go to the academy and go put on the uniform?
I put on the uniform, and I would not cower down like that.
All right, they're hiding. Thin blue line in qualifying immunity. Do your job. Fifty bucks, you get a raise, you do it better.
Give me money else out, help first again, the lady was speaking. You can leave, you can leave now.
May I make a statement?
No, you're not. We're done, we're done. This city is the last one to do our open comments tonight, and we're gonna go to our business, but we're done.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
More comment if, if y'all don't mind.
Sure. We'll give you that respect.
Yeah, cool. But I'm done, but I, I do appreciate.
In my opinion, guys, respect is earned or purchased, and you can't afford.
Y'all still are going through this with all of us from Uvalde, and I understand that other people heard, other people think that they don't know Uvalde.
So, I do wanna say something. I'm not sure who she, that lady is, but we've been fighting. It sounds like she's fighting for the cops more than the community. I don't know that.
No.
But.
For everybody.
I'm speaking. Now, I'm speaking. So, I will say, I've talked to every single family member, and they tell me not to stop fighting. Do not stop fighting, don't shut up.
Yes.
And I've been some of the ones that's been yelling. You're saying they're yelling and all this stuff? I've been doing that too, but we've been asking for more people to come to protest with us, to stand with us.
You didn't yell.
It's like ten people, fifteen people out of the fifteen thousand or twenty thousand, but if there's something free, they're there. So, this is for the children, but I stand with the parents, and they backed me up, and they're telling me not to stop. Don't, don't stop fighting. They don't wanna come. They don't wanna come right now, they can't. I understand you have a relationship with the cops or whatever it is. We're all in this together, but they tell us not to stop fighting. We're not gonna stop fighting. These guys are coming in, maybe it's necessary for something to happen, but I yell, they yell. Sometimes we're passionate about this.
I understand the parents, and I can understand the community here, but others that, you know.
You can't pick and choose.
It's, it's, y'all, your community, you're the ones going through that.
We're asking you to come and help and stand with us.
I'm not saying that I'm protecting.
I haven't seen you protest.
I'm not, I don't.
We've been here. We've been protesting.
I have not protested because, for one, I'm divided. I'm divided between, that's, that's all.
I'm with the families. I get emails saying, "Please continue to fight until something happens."
They can't speak, they're in fear.
Fifteen people, twenty people, we're asking for more.
And I can understand you protesting, and I can understand you as part of the family and part of the families here.
You can't pick and choose.
But the part of the families, part of the family, there's some people that come in here and they degrade these gentlemen. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about.
Free speech.
I'm not, I'm.
Free speech is meant to cover controversial speech, not non-controversial speech. Free speech is so that I can say something to the public.
We're getting out loud again, we're not, we're not gonna do it again. Adam, we'll let you finish. We've got you all three times, so we'll let the man behind you speak. After that, we're going to city.
We're in, we're in this together, I'm sorry, but I'm just saying that we need more people to stand up. We've been calling on the people, family members want us to continue fighting. Please join us so that we can get some answers. It seems like it's been working. She says it's not getting anywhere. I believe it is, and we're gonna keep fighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you for having us out here.
The right one.
Thank you.
Thank you for standing up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for allowing me to talk. I don't believe I need a mic, I think my voice escalates enough.
Yes, sir.
And I just want everybody here, the citizens of Uvalde to know is that us outsiders that you guys seem to not like and push us away, we feel the same pain that you do, and we're all American citizens. And yes, we are divided as a people, not only in Uvalde but in America as well. And I've tried to push it so many times to wake so many people up, only to be labeled and pushed away and called many derogatory names that you guys wouldn't even think of, okay? And I understand there is a process with you gentlemen, I do, I truly do, but there needs to be an expedition in, in that process, and these people need to know that you stand for them and that you're really gonna do something for them. And even if that means transparency and allowing them to know step-by-step process and how that's getting done and how you're making movement toward getting that end result. Sometimes the only thing to really keep you bonded are the small things that really matter, and if it means mere communication, then that's what we need to be doing for the people of Uvalde. And the memorials that need to be sitting over there at Town Square, those need to be made out of gold, marble, and any other fine metals that you can think of, and it doesn't need to come out of these people's pocket. In my opinion, it needs to come out of three hundred and seventy-six officers' pockets. That's what I think. Neither one of those officers need to be, need to be paid, and that gentleman right there is a direct reflection just earlier of how the leadership acts in this, in this community for the, for the PD.
Shame on him.
And also, the lady that spoke over here earlier about the DPS harassing your citizens, I got big footage of that, and if you like that, City Manager, I'd be more than happy to give that to you. The last time I was out here, DPS followed me, wrote down my vehicle number, wrote down my identity, followed me to the Billy Bob, sat there while I had lunch, and then literally stood up and wrote all my vehicle information around and followed me for the rest of town, and that was right after our communication. So, your DPS is doing stuff out here to these people, and you wanna talk about creating disdain between the community of people? It may not be your officer, but it was that gentleman earlier, but it is also the state PD here, and who has control of that? Who has the communication between their leadership to make that change and make sure that they're not doing the same thing and creating more divide amongst the people?
That's right.
The people sit here and talk about officer safety, officer safety, officer safety, the thin blue line, that thing that that gentleman wears on his mask, and it deracates my American flag that I lost brothers for, and a lot of us veterans here fought for and lost brothers for. And he has the audacity to walk around like that.
Shame.
It's not protecting the bar of progress.
There needs to be change, and I understand that you gentlemen are making changes, but it needs to be expedited, and these people need to be in that process, even if it means being in the know. I think you owe them that, and I think that's fair. But I do stand with people of Uvalde, and I do feel your pain. Whether you think I don't or I do, I do, I promise you, and I would stand in front of you before any of these officers would ever even give their own lives to protect you, I'd give my own for you. I promise you that.
For all of you.
Thank you, City Manager, thank you, Mayor.
You need another battery?
I got it.
Sorry, guys, my voice is going away.
I don't know who that lady was that spoke earlier. She said she was in the service, and I thank her for her service. Everyone appeared when this city council chose to be here. I chose to be a part of you because of the body, come what may. Unfortunately, we had a tragic incident on May twenty-fourth. It involved obviously several agencies, one on this one. You know, with these people from out of town, what have you, that only tells me that the world is watching what we're doing. The country is watching what Uvalde is gonna do in this situation. Absolutely. Need to have a change within our local government, and I'm talking about departments within the police agencies in Uvalde. There needs to be a change. It ain't business as usual, remember? It can't be. We can't afford it. Our children, our families, our community cannot afford business as usual. There needs to be change, and there will be change, and it is gonna take some time. We need to navigate through this process, we need to know where we fell, and it's, it's pretty obvious to say, "Well, they didn't do anything." Well, my question is, why not? Why didn't you act? You know, we see a video, it's pretty obvious, but, you know, it goes a little bit deeper than that. There's leadership involved, and those leaders, leaders need to be held accountable for the borders, 'cause a border is gonna follow a leader. That's the way it works. You know, and so, if, if they see a leader that's not moving, that's not making the decision, very few followers will actually step up. But there needs to be change. I appreciate all the comments that we'll make here tonight, whether you're from Uvalde or not, but that just only tells me that the border's watching to see what Uvalde's gonna do. This is a situation that's affected not only our community but our country, our state. And we need, we need to, and we're gonna act on it. We're gonna hold people accountable for this. We, as a city council, owe it to the communities of Uvalde. And this community, you know, they say we're close knit, we're a tight-knit family, we stick together. For us, the only people that see here are the victims' families. They need support. They need people to come out and support them, at least stand in the audience, stand in the hallways and say, just, you know, you're actually speak loudly, if this place was full, I can understand Uvalde is close, Uvalde is being supported by its community, but who's here? The victims, and I feel for them, I really do. But we're gonna get past this. This will pass, and I believe that decisions, the right decisions are gonna be made, but we just let, let the process take its course, and then we'll, we'll see how everything turns out, and we hope that everything is for the better for Uvalde, because our city deserves, our community deserves nothing but the best. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Tarnish badge, face the tyranny, guys. Nothing but shame on that badge. Wants to walk around with this desecration of a flag on his face and show pride to that blue line gang. These guys put the blue line in more danger than anybody in history.
Like, we living in a society now where people wanna recall how they discipline their child. The people that might get mad with this video is the people that probably already embarrassed their child. You can't, you can't discipline your child in their room, takes something away from them. If they act up, I'm like, "Son, you can't play the game."